Okay, for our time limit and teachers, am I good? Okay, he's got me. All right. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants and click on the raise hand icon by their name for the virtual group. Would recognized by the chair address comments directly to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please cancel the raise hand icon after speaking. Presentations must be kept under six minutes. The chat box can also be used to ask simple questions. Board members are required to keep their video active during the board meeting. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions, outgoing letters will be posted for the public on the Google Drive website that we have in our announced agenda. For roll call right now, Cooney, Aguard, he's not here. Rodney Wong, Charmin Duran.
Here.
Guy Noe could not be here. Brendan Lee, Dion Mesta could not be here. Junior Miazano could not be here. Dan Smith. Thank you. Nate Taguchi.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Tony Velasco.
Here.
And myself, Larry Vareya, we have quorum. Okay, um, board members, uh, I would like to propose to add an item to our agenda to which will propose that we recess next month for the month of July. And, uh, can I, can I get a motion to approve the recess for July? Second. A second. Okay, Tony's second. Okay, and if I hear no objections, we could Brendan.
Um, it's not that I have an objection. I have a query.
Yes.
Does sunshine law allow us to vote on something that we added to the agenda less than the six days? That is required by sunshine law for an agenda is that.
I believe for this item right here, that does not pertain because this was for a meeting. Can you correct me if I'm wrong there?
Yeah, um, what, uh, this actually happened with the Manoa board. Um, they wanted to have a recess in July and I did ask Dylan, uh, Whetzel. And he said, if they, if the board wants to have a recess, they can have a recess. It's up to the board, honestly.
So my question isn't about whether we can recess. My question is whether we can vote on it.
Yeah, during, also during the, um, for Manoa board, they didn't had it on their agenda. So.
So they had it on the agenda on the six days as.
Yeah, they didn't have.
We don't have that.
Yeah, and we don't have that too. So as they said, it was okay. It's.
Who said it was okay?
Dylan Whetzel.
Which is?
Uh, he's the deputy, uh, NCO.
The deputy. So we have, we have clear, we have guidance from OIP. Office of Information and Practices that it's okay for us to add something to the agenda in less than six days and vote on it.
Yes. Well, because of this, it's just a recess. It's okay.
So, okay, so again, my question isn't about whether we can recess. I believe we can. I believe that the chair has the authority to call. For not having a meeting next month. That's not the same as us voting on it. So my question is, well, I guess one is, are we allowed to vote on it because it's less than the six days that is required by sunshine law? Or can the chair just say, we are not vote, we are not meeting next month?
I am going to make the decision as the chair that we add this to the agenda for the reason is we gave up our recess date in March. And I understand your point that you want six days advance. If this was a big community issue with everybody waiting, you know, waiting for something, I could see. This right here is an administrative item for the board on behalf of the board. Because we gave up a recess in March for.
And I'm gonna respectfully disagree, Chair, because this, while it is administrative for the board. We are representatives of the community and that's the reason why the sunshine law is there. So that the, so that the public has noticed that the board has the intent on not meeting next month. And if they so choose, they can show up and speak against that motion for us to meet next month. And we have not provided by sunshine law, the community. That ability to come and make that argument should they so choose. Now, I'm not saying they're gonna do that, but that's what sunshine law states. And I don't want this board to get in trouble with OIP because we decided. This is just an administrative thing, so we're gonna vote on it when sunshine law states that things that the board is gonna vote on requires a six day notice to the community.
So could you tell me what the impact will be if we go ahead and, uh, if we recess? What's the impact?
So, Mr. Chair, I don't believe the impact is the issue. Laws are in place for a reason. Whether we impact the community or not, sunshine law states. That we have to provide the community with six days notice for items that the board is gonna vote on. Do I think us not meeting next month is gonna do anything to the community? No, but I don't write the laws, Mr. Chair. The sunshine law is in place for a reason. We don't get to pick and choose when we're gonna follow it and when we're not gonna follow it. Whether it's important now because it's just not having a meeting or it's a resolution that we're gonna pass to send up to the city council or the senate or the state legislature in any form. We don't get to make that decision on when we're gonna follow and when we're not.
Okay, uh, Brendan, your point is made. It's clear. And, uh, I will go ahead and resend my proposal, uh, for a recess for next month. Uh, even though I don't think it's right, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it. And I guess if the law's in place, but let me tell you. It's doing the right thing and the right thing was to get this board a break because things are gonna pick up, but. No, we're good.
No, no. So, Mr. Chair. The other part of my point was, I don't believe that we need a motion and that we need to vote on it. You are the chair of this board. I believe. That. Per the neighborhood board, um. Commission, I believe that you as the chair can say right here now, we are not meeting next. We, without objection, we are not meeting next month. That's not a vote. We didn't vote. The chair of the board said we're not voting next month.
Okay, I tell you, I appreciate the, uh, compromise in there because, uh, that's the way I think it's the right thing to do. So thank you for bringing that solution to this issue. And, uh, I will investigate this issue with the, uh, commission NCO at a later date, but thank you, Brendan, for bringing that up. Uh, uh, we'll, uh. I'll bring it up during announcements at the end. Okay, moving forward, we got Honolulu Fire Department representative here waiting anxiously to give us our update.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am the representative. My name is Kyle Stanky. I'm stationed here at the wildfire station. I'm the engineer. So today I have the neighborhood meeting for you folks for the month of June. Um, I guess previous month, one of the questions that were brought up were, um, drought tolerant plants. So if you want more information on recommended drought tolerated plants, you can go ahead and visit fire dot Honolulu dot gov and, um. We have a list of plants on there that are recommended for droughts. And they also have some other things they can go ahead and take a look at, but this in particular will be located on page eight for drought tolerant plants. Moving into the incident statistics for the month of May. So within our area, we had one structure fire, one wildland slash brush fire. Five nuisance fires, one cooking fire and nine activated alarms with, with no fire. Nuisance fires are described as fires including rubbish outside a structure or a vehicle. And when it comes to emergencies not relating to fire, we've had a hundred forty seven medicals and eight motor vehicle crash and collisions. Moving on to this month's safety message, so. Being in the thick of hurricane season, which is between June first to November thirtieth. The HFD is encouraging everyone to proactively protect ourselves and your family. The way you do this is through advanced planning, understanding and preparation. So we have a couple of safety tips for you folks to be better prepared. Um, some of the things we're recommending is to build a fourteen day disaster supply kit. Take a inventory of all the things you need that rely on electricities. Ensure that you have enough spare batteries or means to power these electric, um, electrical items. Know your medical needs. If you and your family need special, um, medication that require refrigeration or having an ample supply of medications that you may need. In case, you know, pharmacies close down or something of that nature. Uh. If you are using things such as generators or capsules or charcoal grills in event of a power outage to cook your food or use these electrical items. We just recommend that you should always stay, use them outdoors and twenty feet away from windows to avoid any of the carbon monoxide entering a non-ventilated area. And also we recommend turning off any sensitive electrical equipment in case the power does turn back on and you have an unwanted surge damaging your equipment. For more detailed information as in regards to power outages, feel free to visit ready.gov slash power outages. Um, one of the things they wanted us to bring up is starting July first, Hiko is going to commence their public safety power shut off, also known as P S P S program. And that is to reduce the, reduce the risk of the wildfires. So one of the components of the three phase wildfire strategy, Hiko may preemptively shut off power in identified high risk areas, meaning windy. Um, a lot of dry debris that may catch on fire in event of a downed power line or something of that nature. And it is being utilized as a last line of defense to cook, uh, keep communities safe in the results. Uh, a windstorm or something of that nature, high wind and dry conditions. P S P S could last for several hours or up to several days. It's gonna be condition dependent. So whenever they deem it safe, they'll turn the power back on. And there, we're continuously working with Hiko, Border Water and other city, state and federal agencies to help lessen any impacts from the P S P S. If you have any questions, feel free to visit. Dot com for more information.
All right. Thank you for a great report. And, uh, uh, board members, any questions for, uh, HFD? You're none, community? You're none, and we have a very challenging weekend coming up for Fourth of July weekend. And I'm hoping that, uh, people will be very respectful for their neighbors because we know the illegal fireworks will probably be out there. I just hope that they don't land in, uh, any areas where these wildfires could occur for Pearl City. So hopefully people will be mindful, but thank you and, uh, uh, we'll be in touch with you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department. All right, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Hi, can you hear me? You're good?
Yes, I got you really good.
Thank you. I'm Lieutenant David Kawai. I'm with District Three. And what I'll do first is I'll go ahead and address the questions we had last month from my partner, my partner lieutenant who had attended the meeting. So I guess they were concerning about if we're gonna add motor vehicle collisions to our crime mapping. As well as if we're gonna make it more disabled, uh, friendly and accessible. According to the vendor, they, they will not be adding the motor vehicle collisions to our crime mapping or current what we have as well as. They feel that, and by the way, our vendor is called Central Square Technologies. So they're the ones that, uh, pretty much control the information that goes into what we have on our website. They believe that what they have right now is sufficient and primarily the Department of Transportation Services is the ones that. Kind of handle more or less of the information on NBCs for the general public that gets out. So this is the information that I'm relaying. As far as incidents are concerned. For the month of May, since, uh, June is only halfway in, we've had nineteen motor vehicle thefts. Uh, burglaries, we've had three thefts in general, which represent anything from petty misdemeanors on up. We've had thirty two and. Uh, unauthorized entries into motor vehicles, as better known as UEMBs, we'd have five. So the calls for service in April. And the calls for service now, uh, for the month of May, it actually went up by five hundred and thirteen. So in April, we had five thousand four hundred and seven and in May we have five thousand nine hundred and twenty. So as far as that's concerned, we have one last thing, a safety tip. And it's about ensuring that all of your windows and doors are locked and secured, even if you are at home. We've had people. Enter houses while the individual was in the residence. And as a security measure, one of the suggestions is that you either get a piece of doll or a piece of wood that can fit into the tract of a sliding door or window. To prevent that from being forced open. Outside of that, uh, is there any questions, concerns, anything I can help address that you guys, the board has or anybody in the public?
Okay, thank you very much for those updates and board. Uh, do you have any questions for lieutenant? Go ahead, Dan.
Breakdown of these thousands of calls. It's good that you got. You're doing lots of, uh, work, but, um, you know. What are the major categories of, of calls?
So for us, I would say the predominant is the theft. And one of the things that if you guys would like us to provide to you, as we've been asked of other, uh, neighborhood boards. Is the breakdown would include where these calls are coming from. So basically I can say such and such street had these many cars broken into. Uh, this road here, we've had a burglary occur. Would you guys like that for the upcoming neighborhood board meetings from here on out to give a more comprehensive view of what's kind of going on in the Pearl City area?
Yes, anything to improve the reporting process? And I want, I want to say with, with, uh, with, uh, board member Smith, what he, what he, what he's bringing up is crime mapping dot com is a very useful. Software for all our residents of Pearl City. You could take it to a snapshot in thirty days and take a look at where all the burglaries are, all the auto thefts. You guys are doing a great job. With the HPD reports going into the system. That allows community associations to be on alert. When all of a sudden there are more burglaries are happening now in a certain area and they seem to be moving, moving, uh, Malka of Pearl City. It gives them alert that we need to be on our toes. I think the same type of capability needs to be there for accidents. Imagine sitting down with your teenagers that are driving and tell them that the H two, H one merge. Has a high number of collisions because of the merge that's there. Uh, board member Lee brought it up earlier this year. We put it in writing to the H dot about the merge that happens in I A. There's a huge amount of accidents that happen there. And that way you alert your families and say, you need to take extra precautions when you're changing lanes in these areas. I think it's a good idea, especially Yama No Home Road, Cam Highway, those areas. But, uh, but lieutenant, I think one of the things is our board needs to set a requirement. We need to put it in writing to that software company. And tell them it's in our best interest to do that and get the other neighborhood boards to jump onto it.
Yeah, cuz I agree. Because from my experience, I've been here in the district a little more than three years and when a, an accident occurs or what we call an MBC, it really. Lack of better words, it jams a lot of things up. It backs up traffic. Uh, people don't know where to take the side streets to get away from either the freeway or even Kamamea down below. Having this would give everybody information heads up and you're right of where these hotspots are. And that way for us to on our end, we can. Put a higher degree of monitoring to these areas to keep it as safe as possible.
Okay, I'll be contacting you to get that information on that software company. And at the same time, uh, board members virtually, do you have any questions for HPD? See a nun, community? Seeing none? Thank you, lieutenant. Appreciate the updates.
Thank you, guys. You guys take care.
Okay, all right, moving on to, uh, public testimony. Uh, we have three minutes. Uh, is there anybody in the audience here that has anything they want to bring up for issues with Pearl City? See a nun? Also, uh, for virtual, is Tara Sutton there? Tara? Oh, yeah, but come on up while we're, yeah, come on up while we're waiting for Tara to come up because she had reached out to me that she, she, she had an issue she wanted to bring up. Just stand by Tara.
Everyone, I'm kind of new to this. I don't really kind of. Yeah, yeah, what's your name? My name's Gaius Dupio. Um, my question is, I understand there's a phone telephone call if we need to clean up roadkill. Is there a public telephone call we can call for? Um, illegal dumping? Palisades has been seeing a lot of people throwing random trash. Right now we have about three beds randomly scattered around the hill in Palisades. And I'd just like to know, cause tonight I'm gonna go pick it up and then, um, Palisades, we have a little community Facebook where some groups of us, we pick up the trash and we take it to a dump. So I'd like to know, is there a, a public phone call? That I could make for those kind of trash pickups?
Well, first, well, first of all, if you see illegal dumping, you call nine one one.
Of course.
To let them know. And then you can also, you can also contact, uh, the Department of Environmental Services. They, they will also act, but this is, it's trying to catch illegal dumping. It's really tough.
I understand.
And what it is, is that we need the community to be involved.
Right.
You need to provide us the date, the time, the photo, the license plate number of the vehicle. Because after fact, it's too much for HPD.
Oh, no, I, I completely understand.
And the other thing is, if you buy a trail camera and you put it in the right place, you got them.
Yeah. Oh, no, I understand that. I was just wondering, um, how long will it take for it to be picked up? Cause of course. So you, you know, the bed's been sitting there for about four days already. So I just wonder, I'm sure calling nine one one and having them picking up a bed is below and probably not top tier emergency, but.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
To answer his question, you can either email illegodumping@Honolulu.gov or you can call seven six eight three two zero three. If you Google it, that's what I just did.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Just if you Google illegal dumping Honolulu, it's the very first thing that shows up.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Yeah.
And the other thing is, uh, make sure before you leave, you get my email address. So that way I'll, I'll send an email on your behalf to, uh, Ian Vita for a special pickup.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Charmaine?
Yeah, um, is this, uh, a bed by children's house? So, um, what Ian V and, um, what Director Albano has told us is that we can also use the city app. And I actually made a report, um, yesterday. So, um, fingers crossed. And I'll post, I'll post that to our, um, neighborhood website. So to remind people that they could just go online and actually take a picture and. Mark it, drop a pin as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, but to answer your question, uh, no, I picked that bed up, uh, last week, Sunday. Uh, there's a new bed that's in the middle of the gorge and then one right on top of my drive. That's about on the medians near my actual house. So, but yeah, tonight I'm gonna go pick it up and just. Handle it another day. So it's all good. Just wanted to ask for future reference.
Well, thank you for being involved. Uh, we need everybody in the community to step up and help us keep, keep our city clean. Okay, uh, is Tara, are you ready?
Yes, thank you for your patience. I couldn't figure out how to unmute.
You got three minutes.
Um, I just wanted to thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Um, my name is Tara Sutton and I'm the Director of Community Engagement for the Red Hill Registry within the University of Hawaii System Office of Strategic Health Initiatives. Uh, last week, the University of Hawaii announced the establishment of the Red Hill Registry supported by a five-year, twenty-seven-point-two-million-dollar federal grant. From the National Center for Disaster Medicine and Public Health. The Red Hill Registry will be an independent opt-in registry co-developed with the community to track health status, connect pace, uh, participants to services and gather data. On the long-term health effects from the twenty twenty-one fuels bill. This project is crucial for dividing the, providing the necessary support and resources to those who were affected by this bill. In the coming months, we'll be hosting community listening sessions and establishing a community oversight working group to ensure that community voices are included in every step of the process. We aim to formally launch the registry enrollment by fall of twenty twenty-five. So I would like to urge everyone here, especially those who have been impacted by the Red Hill water contamination, to stay informed and participate in this effort. You can sign up for updates on our website landing page, which is just redhillregistry.org and provide your email address there. Um, additionally, I'd like to request that we be added to the agenda for your next meeting. Uh, this would allow us to provide a more in-depth overview of the project and be available to answer any questions for you or the community that may have. Uh, thank you again for your time and consideration. If you have questions or need further information, you can email me directly at T Sutton at redhillregistry.org.
Great, thank you, Tara, and, uh.
Thank you.
I'll make note to put you on our next board meeting agenda when it's announced. Uh, board members, any questions for Tara? Okay, community? See a nun? Thank you, Tara. Okay, are there any other, uh, community concerns online? Okay, here are none. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, board business. Uh, board members, we have one resolution. Uh, we had this posted, uh, six days ago on our, uh, uh, on our Google site. And I, and I gave you guys a read ahead. And vice chair, are you ready to, uh, present the reso?
Sure. This resolution, the title is urging the state and city to take proactive steps to combat illegal gambling operations on Oahu. Um, and. There are. Let's see, eight requests. Um, advocate, uh, city advocate to include illegal gambling operations. Um, combating illegal gambling operations as part of the state package. Set lower foreclosure triggers for notice of violations. Um, mandate and fund neighborhood watches in communities plagued by illegal gambling operations, promote HPD's illegal gambling hotline. State work, uh, work to close loopholes in the Pinocchio that impede law enforcement in addressing gam- illegal gambling operations. State investigate establishing increased penalties in sensitive areas and residential areas. Um, state work to create illegal gambling division with, within the Department of Law Enforcement. And state and city work with feds to get greater support for combating illegal gambling operations in Hawaii. Move to approve.
Okay, can I get a motion to, uh, a second to approve? Okay, discussion. Charmaine, you want to talk a little more?
Yes, I just wanted to give some background. Um, I got a request or an inquiry whether our neighborhood board could help to look at illegal gambling. And since we've had several of, uh, several complaints and inquiries over the last couple of years, um, I started looking at it. So for the last month, I reviewed. Um, everything at the city, state, um, and many, 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 uh, newspaper articles. So I looked at about, uh, sixty items at the city, which include current legislation. Um, and previous legislation and a, a whole bunch of neighborhood board actions and minutes requesting help with illegal gambling operations. And then I looked at over a hundred items, um, at the state. Committee reports and reports and legislation and testimony, also requesting, um, further action for addressing illegal gambling. Operations or houses. It just depends, um, which community. Some of these are in commercial areas. Many are in residential areas. Um, and this resolution is kind of a summation of all the different, um. Options that came up that have been requested by people in communities over the last decade or so. And I think. That addresses, that's the entire background.
Okay, thank you, Charmaine. Uh, this definitely helps us go on record for Pearl City on where we stand on illegal gambling. Board members, any other discussion items? None here in person? None in virtual community? Any questions? See a nun? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote. Rodney Awong? Charmaine?
Hi.
Brendan? Dan? Nate?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
And myself, Larry. Aye, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, seven ayes. Uh, the motion passes. Thank you, Charmaine. Okay, moving forward. To. Our state legislators, uh, Senator Wakai, are you on, excuse me, uh, to our, uh, office of the governor? We've got Jeff Hickman here. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share with the board and the community, the governor's newsletter came out. Um, we'll be sharing it electronically with the chair. Um, three things that are in there that are, um, might be of value is the, talk about the housing on Maui, uh, that. Making sure that everybody who is currently in the hotels and with the. Um, three things that are in there that are, um, might be of value is the, talk about the housing on Maui, uh, that, making sure that everybody who is currently in the hotels and with the temporary housing have the steps to move on to the next level. Uh, also affordable housing on Oahu and a good one that's kind of interesting, fighting the rhinoceros beetle grant program. Uh, communities can apply for that if they want to. Uh, so that's all in the newsletter. And there was an inquiry last month, uh, to the governor about a DOE rep attending. Since July is, will be gone, I, I can almost promise, because it's still out of my hands, but, uh, there should be a DOE rep at least on Zoom to attend this meeting. I'm ready for your questions if you have any.
Board members, any, any questions for, uh, Mr. Hickman? Anything virtual? Anything from the community? Hearing none. Thank you, Jeff. Have a great week. Okay, moving on, Mr., Mr. Casey Abi.
Yes, I'm here, uh, Chair. I hope you can see the screen. Yeah, good evening, Chair Verri. Members of the Pro Señor and Board, uh, Casey Abi from the State DOT Highway Division. Uh, last week I received a call from Chair Verri about overgrowth at the corner of the Acacia Road and Kamia Highway near the US Post Office. Doing a quick field investigation yesterday, I noticed the overgrowth had been cut back. So I would like to thank the person or group who cut back the overgrowth. They did a great job. Uh, but I did notice as you approached Acacia Road intersection, after passing Pro Se Elementary School, overgrowth is getting out of hand. So I'm working with our Oahu Maintenance Crew to cut back the overgrowth. At last month's meeting, I mentioned Sandra Alefante emailed me about overgrowth along Kamia Highway between Calmont Street and Po'onai Street. I apologize, but our district maintenance crew is still, has not addressed overgrowth along the whole stretch of Kamia Highway to, uh, Pro City. I'll need to report back to you at next month's meeting. Uh, these pictures were taken yesterday. Uh, on June twelfth, I received an email and this picture from Sandra Alefante about overgrowth on Pono Hala Street next to our Wyomaro Field Office. I phoned our district office, um, crew, but, uh, did not hear back from them. And I apologize, I missed this area during my field inspection yesterday. But I will follow up, uh, do a follow-up inspection next, uh, this week and report back in next month's meeting. At last month's, uh, meeting, I mentioned Sandra Alefante, you sent me an email about a damaged fence under East One Freeway along Cal, LA Street, uh, near Dave's Ice Cream. During a quick field check yesterday, our maintenance crew has repaired the damaged fence. At last month's meeting, I reported a homeless encampment and damaged fence under East One Vida. Our homeless corner cleared the area that week and I asked our maintenance crew to repair the fence. But on Monday, uh, June tenth, I received an email from Sandra Alefante about another homeless encampment since the fence has not been repaired. I also noticed a lot of graffiti during my field inspection. Our homeless corner removed encampment that week and is temporarily doing weekly checks on the area until our maintenance crew can repair the damaged fence. After doing a quick field investigation yesterday, I noticed the fence has not been repaired yet. Not a girl three D painted over, so I'll be following up with our maintenance crew and report back, uh, next month. Also on June tenth, Senator Alefante informed me about a gate being opened with no lock near the other side of Calonohi Street Overpass. Doing a quick field check yesterday, um, our maintenance crew had secured the gate. I noticed during my field inspection yesterday, there is a graffiti artist named Gucci who has left his artistic work along the Makai Side of Kamia Highway. The Makai Side of Kamia Highway also has a graffiti artist at work. I will work with our maintenance crew to paint over graffiti. But if a service group like the Lions Club can provide manpower assistance, our Wild District Office can provide the paint. And last month's meeting, there was a concern about installing audible pedestrian crossing equipment at intersection along Kamia Highway. I talked to our traffic branch and they mentioned they are waiting for the City and County of Honolulu DTS Traffic Signals and Technology Division to decide what type of audible pedestrian crossing equipment to install, since they will be maintaining the equipment under our maintenance agreement. I would like to ask the mayor's representative, Director Albano, to follow up with the DTS Traffic Signal and Technology Division on the type of equipment they want the state to install, so we can move forward with installing the equipment at the intersections requested by the neighborhood boards. And finally, at last month's meeting, there was a suggestion to conduct a pilot project by opening the currently closed off ramp that would allow motorists from Waipahu and YPO to have direct access to the Highlands Transit Station while we wait for the new signalized left turn lane at Koala Street to be constructed. The left picture shows the closed off ramp that would be open. The right picture shows a closed ramp that would be open as you approach the transit station on Kamia Highway going eastbound. As mentioned previously, one of the major concerns we have is there is no exclusive left turn lane or traffic signal for vehicles wanting to make left turn onto Wyhona Street to get to the Pro City Industrial Park. So we would currently prohibit any left turn movement onto Wyhona Street. But even when we start a signalized left turn lane at Koala, Koala Street, uh, we will continue to prohibit the left turn onto Wyhona Street, because when Hart did this traffic study, they did not consider the possibility of vehicles wanting to make a left turn onto Wyhona Street, so they can avoid making a U-turn at Acacia Road to get to the Pro City Industrial Park. As mentioned in the previous meeting, I recommend the board or their elected officials to contact our director about conducting a study if it's a good idea to allow vehicles to make the left turn onto Wyhona Street from the off ramp. If the off ramp was open, traffic will have to merge with buses and vehicles, making the U-turn to drop off and pick up passengers at the transit station, which may not be a big problem. But one of the major concerns is the safety for pedestrians crossing the street to access the transit station, especially with the increase in vehicle traffic. Although there is highway lighting, the lighting is intermediate. Normally, we would like to have the highway light on the right shoulder where the pedestrians will be walking. We're also concerned that the pedestrians walk, uh, currently walking on the paved right shoulder and not a raised sidewalk. Ideally, if there is a pedestrian bridge from Koala Street to the transit station, it would be a lot safer for the pedestrians. Another major concern we have is that traffic will probably back up onto the existing ramp from the transit station, because motorists will be lining up on the left shoulder, waiting to make the left turn at Acacia Road. And if vehicles coming from the transit station are lined up on the left side of the ramp, vehicles coming from the Leeward Community College, we have a very difficult time crossing order to get to the left turn lane. And they will probably block the true traffic. We do understand that, uh, we do understand and have a major concern that even when the signalized left turn lane at Koala Street is open, some owners may still want to take this route if they want to get to the US Post Office or think it may be faster to get to Sam's Club. But we hope that with the new signalized left turn lane at Koala Street, it will provide motorists with an, an alternative route to Pearl Highland Shopping Center, Walmart and Foodland Farms. So after talking to our traffic branch, we don't, we do not recommend opening the off ramp even as a pilot project. We hope the board and the public will be patient with us as we work on preparing the construction plans for the signalized left turn lane at Koala Street. Tentatively, the project is scheduled for advertisement in the fall of twenty-twenty-five. But, um, if the board really wants this pilot project, the board can write a letter to our director or have the elected officials talk to our director. This concludes my report. If the board members or the public have concerns about state highways, they can email me. I would greatly appreciate if you can include pictures or Google map locations of your concerns. I can take questions at this time. Thank you.
Casey, thank you very much. All great updates and, uh, thank you for taking some of our board requirements and taking action on those. Appreciate it. Board members, any questions for Casey? Casey, seeing none in person, virtual? No questions, audience? None, Casey? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And also, uh, I'll be picking up paint from you for the Lions Club. We've got a major graffiti increase in I Am Pearl City and we need to bring the Lions and continue to help paint out graffiti. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our state legislature. Okay, Senator Glenn Wakai, anybody from, are you there, sir, or anybody from your office? Okay, hearing none? Okay, and we have Senator Brandon Alefante front and center. Thank you, sir.
Great evening, uh, Chair Verri, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, those in the audience and those online. Uh, Brandon Alefante from the State Senate. This, I have the same newsletter, um, it's the same newsletter for the rest of summer. There are a few extra copies here on the table and they're available online, um, on the Capitol. Just a few highlights, um, this week, the Senate is in special session for four judiciary nominees to the First Circuit. Um, some of those judges, um, that are nominated are coming from family court. So we'll be in special session on Wednesday and Thursday to advise and consent on Governor Green's nominees to the First Circuit. And then lastly, I want to mention that, uh, the governor's veto deadline for all the bills is July tenth. So that's coming up soon. Um, he was, he had a deadline of submitting a report and list and listed seventeen measures on his intent to veto. So that's his deadline with a number of bills. I know there are a number of bills that the board and community has been tracking. One in particular that Rep Chun and I have been closely working on is the Silver Alert Bill SB twenty-three oh five, twenty-three oh five. And, um, you know, we're looking forward to him, uh, signing that into law, uh, shortly, so we're really excited about that. Otherwise, um, enjoy your summer and happy early Fourth of July to all of you. And one final thing on Guy, thank you so much, Guy, for, is it Guy? Is your name? Gaius, yeah. Thank, thank, thank you for all that you do. I, I think Vice Chair Duran mentioned about Honolulu three one one and picking up that. And as a former city council member, I know Ian V, the Department of Environmental Services, they do actually go out and investigate and cite and actually go through the, the OPALA, uh, that's on the road. So if you just submit that, what Board Member Lee shared with you on that, um, they'll do a ticket and send out a team to investigate. So appreciate you. Yeah. That concludes my report. Thank you, Chair.
Senator, thank you. I've distributed your report to all the board members. And, uh, thank you for Casey Abi, what he said. Uh, thank you for jumping in there and citing all those issues with the homeless underneath the bridges. A lot of people don't understand this, but a lot of our fiber optic cables run under a lot of br- a lot of the bridges here in Pearl City, I A, and also through the Kali areas. And all it takes is a fire to take out a number of businesses. And, uh, also, uh, I'm eagerly waiting for HB twenty-one ninety-two to be signed by the governor. And I'm hoping that, uh, all our legislators will be there for that photo shoot for the cemetery. Right, uh, Brad, you got a question for Senator?
Oh, yeah. I just was, uh, well, this past week, uh, there was, uh, some news about that he may veto for the, uh, inebriated drivers who, you know, like, uh, Sarah Yara, who got hit on Kapialani Boulevard. And so it was one thing, you know, um, I'm sure you guys are familiar with that bill, but is there not, not enough teeth in it to make him want to put it into law? Or, you know, it's just got some other concerns, because, uh, you know, that, that one was a bad one, the one up here was a bad one. You know, everyone is a bad one. So every time you, you know, you veto a bill like that, it just takes the wind out of the sails of the people.
Yeah, um, thank you, Board Member Awong, for that question. Um, I have to double check the list of intent to veto lists. It's just his intention. So he may or may not, uh, veto those seventeen measures that are listed on that. I can follow up with you and share with you on that. I'm not sure why, what the reasoning is. But these are bills that have passed the legislature and made it to the governor's desk, um, for that. So be happy to follow up with you on that. I know that particular issue is a grave concern. You know, especially for repeat offenders who may be inubrated or for whatever reasons in that. And I know that the police and prosecuting attorneys are doing what they can and we're doing what we can to look at strengthening our laws for that. But I'll be happy to follow up with you and provide you with that link, so you can read more on that. Thank you.
Okay, board members, any questions? Okay, virtual, anybody? Casey and none, community? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, Senator Henry Aquino? Anybody online?
Aloha Chair, Chair Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Board members, my name is Nathaniel Isay. Um, I did submit my report and I am also standing by my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll make sure that all the board members have, have seen that. Uh, moving on to Representative Greg Takayama, anybody from his office? Okay, seeing none. Uh, and we have Representative Cory Chun here. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Chair, uh, board members. Cory Chun, uh, District thirty-five from the House. Uh, just want to start off by congratulating Chair Verri, who just, um, earlier today had his, uh, nomination for the Neighborhood Commission, uh, passed the Executive Matters and Legal Affairs Committee in the City Council. So congratulations on that. I think you still need a full council vote for adoption, but it looks like you're on your way to. So congratulations, Chair. Um, you know, I'd just like to share, you have my, uh, report. It's actually my end of session report, so the timing is good, because, um, there is a, uh, I did mention a bill in there that passed the legislature. Still waiting for the governor to sign. It was part of the, uh, Honolulu Prosecutor's Office package, which deals with illegal gambling. And it was a bill to kind of, um, remove a loophole that the prosecutors had in prosecuting, um, gambling houses. And basically what the law stated was that as long as a, uh, owner of the property did something to, uh, uh, sort of adjust the, the gambling problem, then it was a affirmative defense, even if it was ineffective. So that's what they're saying. It's like, you know, even if they put up a camera, which did nothing, um, it was still a defense. So by taking that away, now the prosecutors can actually go, uh, uh, bring a case against the, the property owners instead of just trying to, uh, go after the folks who are actually, uh, perpetrating the, the crimes. So that's something, I believe there is, it's only set to last for about five years. It's sort of like a pilot, just to make sure, because there were concerns when you're going after homeowners, uh, that issues may come up. So we're gonna see how that plays out and what kind of prosecutions come out and issues and, and see if we can make that permanent or maybe have to scale it back. Um, and then, I guess that's, hey, unless you have, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll make it short. Uh, I'll just close on that and I'll be open for any questions, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you, uh, thank both you and Senator Alefante for the accolades that you gave me today for the, uh, uh, for the, uh, hearing that I was at. Um, and also, uh, those bills that you put in really are gonna make a difference. That Silver Alert, there's so many of our seniors there that we need to guard for them. And I think that's perfect. Okay, and other than that, the board members, any questions for our representative? Anything virtual? Hearing none, Cory, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, Representative Trish Lachica. Any representatives? Okay, there's Erin. Welcome.
Hi, aloha Chair, members of the board. Um, congratulations, Chair. We don't have much of a report tonight. Our office has been focusing on the power outage issues that our community has been dealing with um, in Mililani Town and YPO. Um, I know that's not necessarily this neighborhood board area, but we did request HECO to send letters and communicate with residents, which they did. Um, so we were pleased with that. We have been focusing on mainly constituent issues like e-bikes and trash pickup issues. Uh, that pretty much concludes my report, but if anyone has anything to pass along to the representative, I'm happy to take note.
Okay, Erin, uh, any questions, uh, board members? Anything virtual? None, and, uh, and, and please give my regards there to our representative, the town hall meeting that she helped host with, uh, with the neighborhood boards on crime. I, I watched part of that on a little, and I wish I would have attended that. I just couldn't make it, but thank you so much.
Thanks. Will do. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, uh, is, uh, Nestor Garcia online? Nestor couldn't make it. Okay, moving on to, uh, the office of the mayor, uh, Mr. Gina Bono could not be here. But, uh, Brendan has his report. Brendan, could you please read his report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, Mr. Gina Bono, this month's highlights from the mayor's newsletter. Mayor Blangardi creates the Ocean Safety Department and signs resolution for a voter-approved commission. An update on improvements to the city's critical important nine-one-one system. A list of res- resources for Hurricane Prepareness Month, which begins in June every year. Information about HECO's public safety power shut-off program, which begins July first. And how City and County of Honolulu is helping to support the Hawaii Food Bank. The newsletter can be found online. Um, department issues that needed follow-up from our last meeting. Um, long grass cutting on Monolo Road. Uh, Department of Facility Maintenance, Monolo Road from the freeway to Ho'omalo Street is under the jurisdiction of the Hawaii Department of Transportation. DFM has initiated several, initiated service requests, number five six nine oh two, for the request to cut the city's portion of the overgrowth on Wa'ama'ano Home Road. The, DFM maintains the west side Wa'ama'ano Home Road, starting at two four three zero Wa'ama'ano Home Road and ending at Ho'omalo Street. And on the east side, starting at Okekeke to No'ilani Street. Wanolo Road between Ho'omalu Street and Wa'ama'ano Home Road was serviced yesterday. Uh I A, Pearl City Sustainable Plan, uh Department of Planning and Permitting. The Department of Planning and Permitting needs clarification on the question that was asked and which document is being referenced. Please provide specific title of the document, including the year. For your information, the Primary Urban Center Development Plan update is currently at the City Council. This region, this region includes the communities of I A and Pearl City. More information on document update can be found on the DPP website, planning documents. Uh he didn't put this in his report, but we as the board did get a email that there will be an informational briefing this Thursday by Councilmember Kia Ina about this document. That's from me, Mr. Chair, not the um Mr. Obano's report. Yellow markers, reflections on guardrails. Can DTS utilize yellow markers and reflections? Uh the Department of Transportation Services is unable to conduct an investigation by general reference and request a specific location of the guardrail. I believe we provided that, but okay. Uh rail ridership, can we provide, can they provide that year-to-date? July first to June fourth, July first of twenty-twenty-three to June fourth, twenty-twenty-four for the Halaulani LCC Wa'ava Pro, Pro Highlands and two surrounding skyline stations are provided below. Ohhala Waipahu Transit Center, one hundred twenty-nine thousand forty-three riders. Halaulani Leeward Community College Station, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and one riders. Wa'ava Pro Highland Station, forty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-nine riders. And Kalau Al Pro Ridge Station, one hundred twenty-four thousand forty-seven riders. Please note that ridership is counted by the number of tap-ins at each station. And finally, perdition. Bridge over Cam Highway Timeline. There's currently no timeline. DTS is trying to obtain funding for this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Brendan, thank you very much for uh uh bringing up all those details. As far as the informational briefing on revised Primary Urban Center Development Plan, that's for Thursday, June twenty-seventh at nine AM. The Committee on Planning and Economy and Councilmember Essek Kayana will go ahead and chair that. I plan on attending. Uh it's gonna be televised in a little. I'll send this email that, that Anson sent out to me. I'll send it out to all the board members tonight in case any of you would like to listen in. But other than that, uh that's it for our mayor's rep. Uh moving on, Councilmember Val Okamoto. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Um the director also provided a records request response, which I have added to the Google Drive. And we don't have to discuss that, but it's on the Google Drive for everybody to see. And that's regarding um aluminum rims. And so we'll wait for August to discuss that, but everybody has access to that. And I believe that the guardrail um from what I seen online, the department at the mayor's town hall said it'll take nine months. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that.
I think I heard the same thing on the town hall meeting.
Um, Mr., Mr. Chair, um thanks for the mayor's report. Uh I'm personally disappointed that uh he's uh you know, pushing the remover of the Haiku stairs. And I hope the uh I hope the court acts on Wednesday and uh gives the stairs a chance.
That's the harl. Right. Okay, thank you. Any other uh items to bring up for Mr. Obano? He's not here. We'll hold it for our next meeting. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Val Okamoto.
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I got you loud and clear.
Aloha Chair, members of the board, Eric Monin with the office of Val Okamoto. Um just real quick, I'll try to keep it quick. Um as you may know, the council just wrapped up the city budget and the mayor signed it the other day. Just a real quick highlight for, for this district. We were able to secure uh two million dollars for repairs and construction for the Pearl City District Park. Um this was a huge part um from you guys, the board, uh specifically Chair Ray and Vice Chair Duran. And a couple of the constituents who have really pushed for um some of the repairs in here, um the leaking roof and a, a, a various number of plumbing issues. Uh this isn't the end of it. As you know, once you get the money, you gotta make sure it's, it's spent and the project is completed. So the council member um remains committed to making sure those funds um are, are, are used and, and the repairs are done in a timely manner. Uh additionally, there was request um to try to get an off-leash dog park in the district. We were able to secure about two hundred thousand dollars to start the processes of that. So that's like design, um input and all, all, all of that stuff. It's like very initial of phases of, of, of that project. Um again, she is committed to that one as well. So she will, she'll be following that. Um you folks did just mention the PUCD. It is true that Kia Ina will be having her uh informational briefing on, on Thursday. Uh for you folks, we are currently working with her office to facilitate a uh community engagement uh specifically for changes that will be happening in the PUC for Pearl City area. Uh we're looking right now, it's tentative. I should be able to, I'm, I'm hoping to solidify all of this by Thursday. Um we're looking at August fifteenth at um the Leeward Community Center uh in, in, in the um theater. Uh I, once I get all of that locked down and everything confirmed, uh uh I will reach out to the chair and make sure that you guys are fully aware of uh everything that's going on with that. Um lastly, as many other um of the others mentioned, we want to congratulate Chair Verre on a successful hearing today. Uh there was a lot of community support for uh Mr. Verre and this, and, and this board in general. Um and we really suspect that to carry it through to the full council. Um so again, thank you guys um very much for all of your help uh with everything for the budget this year. We look forward to uh continuing to work with you folks.
Thank you, Eric, for the uh update, especially the funding that was approved. I know that the uh our, our uh students that use the gym at Wa'au District Park uh appreciate it with all the leaks that they've had indoor for a long time. And also uh two hundred thousand dollars for a dog park to put up a fence around. Doesn't require a whole lot of planning, but I'd sure like to see someone from Pearl City be the champion to come to me as a Pearl City Neighborhood Board, raise your hand and say, I'd like to help lead this effort and really design a nice park, you know, for us in Pearl City. So that, that offer's out there to our residents. Please help us with this, because I don't have the time. Our board members also are pretty, pretty uh even with all the time that they have. Okay, Eric, anything else? Uh board members, any questions? Anything virtual? See a nun, community? All right, give our regards to our uh, our councilwoman. Thank you.
Will do, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to other agencies. We have here Mr. Victor Flint and Mr. Duna Hodge here today. Welcome, gentlemen. And I see that Victor has got rid of his crutches and cane.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Board. Thanks for the opportunity to give you some uh Red Hill updates for Navy Closure Task Force. Uh down and dirty. I think last month I mentioned the open house that we had on May fifteenth, so we'll go ahead and skip to the rest of this. Uh we just successfully removed the manway to gain access to Tank Eight. This happened just over the last few days. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is great. Uh hopefully we'll start. Hopefully you guys will see a press release tomorrow, starting to clean on Tank Eight, which is a big deal for us. Uh we have safely and officially completed a ten-day vending period uh for both Tanks Seven and Eight. So each one of them, you'll start to see them roll in pairs, just one, a couple of days ahead of the next one. Uh air quality monitoring is a big deal. I think when we start vending those tanks, there was some community concern about the and everything like that. This air quality monitoring has been so successful that we're no longer posting the hourly updates. We're doing the daily updates, but the monitoring goes on throughout the day. It's just if you're on our app and you're on our website and you don't see that hourly, it's still being checked. We're just not putting it on there to keep them to keep it from getting kind of stupid, really. Uh drinking water, long-term monitoring continues. It's now called the Extended Drinking Water Monitoring Program. The info booth is still going out. Um the third Wednesday of every month, we were at Kapalina Night Market. That's a great place to catch it. Um Hickam Exchange, Navy Exchange, every month this lady goes out and she's explaining the water samples. She'll explain it to anybody. Uh she'll tell you when the last time your water was sampled. She'll line up a sampling for you, or she'll show you how to read your samples. So it's a great thing to get involved with.
Thank you, Brother Duna. Victor Flint, Naval Facilities. Moalelo is our weekly newsletter, put out every Wednesday. Check it out. It's online. Draw Doc Five. I think all of the previous concerns were addressed at the last one. And everything is going forward on schedule. Also, uh Navy hiring, uh please go online and all that information can be found. Everything from security to emergency response, administrative, the trades, it's all right there. Rim Pak twenty-four, twenty-nine nations. Twenty-five thousand people involved with forty ships, four submarines. Wow. Unreal. Bringing in millions to our local economy. So that's all good. That's going on uh now from let me see, June twenty-sixth to August second. My God. And this is major, because we were, Pearl City was one of the boards pushing this thing heavy. And that's the Restoration Advisory Board. That's back in progress. And the meeting is tomorrow at six PM at Aliamanu Elementary School. So this is a great thing for the community to be involved with what's going on in your community, in the ground and in the air. And this is where we have subject matter experts and engineers and environmentalists to um go through all of these things that are going on and explaining how we are fixing it, how we are restoring it. And thank you, Larry. I got your stuff in, dealing with Pearl City Peninsula and the old fuel farm. That's all I have. Are there any questions for Brother Duna or myself? Thank you.
Okay, for, for Victor and Duna, thank you so much for taking time to come out every month of our meetings. And uh and uh is, have you, have they announced the open house yet for the ships, for Rim Pak, for any tours?
Not yet. I think, uh, well, Carl Vincent pulled in today. So I think things start moving after the, you know, after the big boys get in. Uh I want to say in years past, it was July the fourth, was ships visits for anybody that had base access. So I'll pass that once we hear it, Chair.
Okay, yeah, be nice to hear. And in the uh, in the area discussions that I had with Victor today, uh unfortunately uh Board Member Anoy can't make the meeting tomorrow, so I'll stand in for him for that meeting. And one of the uh uh suggestions that I provided to Victor to bring to the Rab was there's a large field, soon as you enter to Pearl City Peninsula, it used to be an old fuel farm. And it would really be nice if we took a look at that and they did an evaluation to see the risk mitigation involved. But one thing that we have a shortage of in Pearl City and what we need more of for our, our youth programs, we need more softball soccer fields. That field is just perfect that you could put in almost four to six different fields in, have them all operating at the same time. And there's no impact at a Navy, because it'd be a Saturday or Sunday to have these events. So I think it's a great opportunity to use the land and also a win-win for not only for Pearl City and Waipahu and I A, because we're all together, sister townships, but also for the Navy families as well. But the, the board members, any questions for the dynamic duo?
I do.
Sure. Go ahead. And then we got Sherman follow.
Uh Duna, um I was watching the news this week and they are disbanding uh some operation. I thought that might be your group uh for the Red Hill Task Force.
Yeah. Now, the CRI is a community. I forget what the R stands for. It's an initiative to make sure that the community's voices are heard. Uh it's not being disbanded, or at least it's kind of entabled right now. It was an EPA from the Environmental Protective Agency that started this as a way to make sure that we, the Navy, was hearing the voices from the community. So there's been some, uh some back and forth. The Navy um met all the meetings that we were supposed to go to. But the community is, uh the CRI, uh we asked for a mediation. Uh somebody to get in there and make sure that both sides were being, that things were progressing. And uh that kind of stalled out. And then the EPA made an early announcement that the CRI was going to be disbanded. They're still gonna meet, but they're not gonna have any backing from the EPA. Then that all backed away. The EPA has backed down and uh is still supporting the CRI. So we're kind of waiting for it to, to uh settle out right now.
Uh thanks, I, I thought you were gonna be this.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, no problem. And now for Mr. Victor. As I was discussing with Mr. Chun earlier this evening, uh with all these power outages by heckling whatnot and uh the uh unheard of word, you know, for alternative energy sources, you know, in the, on the island of Oahu. Uh know of any?
Well, I, I, I got it, Brother Rod. The alternative energy sources that we own already. Um I don't have any word on, on where we stand with that. I do remember what our governor said when he brought it up that that's not being looked at at this time. But I want to go back to the CRI. Even though we're not having regular meetings with that committee, we still are addressing things in public, like the neighborhood boards and, and other meetings and, and open houses that the Navy has. And anything that comes up dealing with anything Navy, we're as far away as the telephone. And I talk with everybody all the time, so does Brother Duna. And so we are still in communicating with any concerns that the community might have, anything with the Navy.
Stole my thunder, but I was gonna mention Neighborhood Boards are just one of them. Uh we've got another open house, tentatively scheduled uh the twenty-first of August, but that's not definite yet. We've got to find a venue. So we're doing these, these open houses uh which have the subject matter experts there, ready demonstrations, uh the pipes, you know, all kinds of things and informational tools uh for the public to learn more about Red Hill and the scope of what's going on. And we were a little bit disappointed in the last one in May fifteenth. We only had about thirty-five people, but the weather was horrible that week. It was just terrible that week. So we're hoping that the next one will have more people. We're shooting for anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty as a minimum. Uh now I steal your thunder. Yeah, the alternative energy, the solar farm that we talked about last week, it's in the Moalelo. There's a lot of things going on right now. And then I think if these, if these solar farms take off, we're looking at, I want to say that Chuck told me twenty-five percent of Oahu's power can come from these solar farms. Then we just opened up the second one. So these are great things.
That is what I thought. Okay, Rod, I thought you were talking about the other word that we can, okay. And that, that solar farm is in the Salt Lake area of responsibility. So uh we're just gonna focus when we get to Salt Lake, but got it. And we're all gonna benefit from it. So that's what's happening. Thank you, Brother Duna.
Okay, Charmaine?
Um I'm not sure if I asked this before. When I went on the um Harbor tour, there was a woman and I feel like her name was Amy, but I'm not sure this is the actual question. She's um like the community activity liaison. And I'm just actually looking for her name. I think her name was Amy. And I went up to try to get it and she was like surrounded by like thirty people. So if you could help me.
Emily, Emily Hawk?
Yeah, perhaps Emily. Yeah, maybe Emily.
I'll pass you some names and some contact information through uh through your email address and through Chair Verre's as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, any other questions? Don't see any other hands up, community. All right, gentlemen, thank you so much. Okay, moving forward, we're, we're coming along pretty quickly here. And next on the agenda is Chancellor Penalozza. He's not here. Uh Vicky Bowie for Pearl City Library. Vicky, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Uh good evening. We have a lot of programs going on in July, but first I'm gonna mention that our um, we are gonna be closing on July fourth, Thursday in observance of Independence Day. And uh our summer reading program is still going strong. Uh it ends at the end of July. So if you haven't had a chance to register, you can do so if you have the Beanstack app already, or you can come, um contact the library about how to register. And uh I'm not gonna mention every single program, because there's, there's a lot of them, but we do have programs every Sunday. So if you're interested in coming to the library on Sundays, we have a lot of craft programs. Uh just gonna mention a couple. Uh one is the Chinese knotting on July twenty-first at ten thirty-eight. at ten thirty AM. Uh, registration is required for that, so please contact the library about it. And I wanted to mention, um, the Forest Birds Program. We were supposed to have it last month in June, but we had to reschedule it for July twenty-eighth and that's at one PM. So if you want to learn about, um, it's called Ma, Ma Kahiki Ona Manu Nahelen. This is with the, uh, please, it's the Parks Department. Um, yeah, it's, oh, sorry, Department of Land and Natural Resources Division of Forestry and Wildlife. And they're going to share information about Hawaii birds and the threats that they face. So we're hoping that people will, um, uh, attend that and, uh, it should be a good one. And I'm not going to mention all the other programs, but you can pick up a, of, um, a calendar from our library and find out what's going on. You can visit our website, librarieshawaii.org. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Thank you, Vicky. Board members, any questions for Vicky? Nothing in person, virtual? All right, and, uh, community? Vicky, thank you so much for the updates and so much what you do for Pearl City with the library.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, the Board of Water Supply. We got Harlan online. And he's got good news for us.
Good evening, Chair. Uh, good evening, board members. Uh, no water main breaks to report last month. Uh, Border Water Supply works hard to ensure that the water served to our customers is safe to drink. Each year, we conduct dozens of tests on the water sources and distribution system to ensure that they meet or exceed all federal and state safe drinking water standards. The result of the tests are included in our annual water quality report, which is mailed to all our customers July first. Digital copy, copies and additional water quality information are available at www dot borderwatersupply dot com. You may also call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one if you'd like more information. That's the end of my report.
Okay, Harlan, thank you so much. Uh, all right, board members, uh, any questions for Harlan? BWS? Any? None, virtual? Okay, Harlan, thank you much. Okay, moving on to, uh, association updates. Tony, what do you got for us for the PTSA and the Pearl City Community Association?
Um, there's no updates for PTSA, but, um, for P C C A, for P C C A, we'll have a school supply drive at Walmart on July tenth, uh, twentieth from nine AM to twelve PM. So that's at Walmart, July twentieth from nine AM to twelve PM. And then August tenth, I have a Mark the Kai Family Fun Day at the Pearl City High School Cafeteria from nine to one. So if, if you folks can make it, go for it and we're looking forward to seeing you folks. And that's it, Chair.
All right, Tony, thank you. Any questions for Tony? Seeing none? Okay, moving on to our board minutes. Uh, everybody got a chance to see the, uh, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes? Can I get a motion to approve? Rodney? Second? Okay, we got Dan second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, none? Um, if there are no objections, we'll consider them approved. Okay? All right, moving on, uh, meetings attended by other board members, any meetings? Well, any of you attended? Okay, none? Okay, as far as the chair announcements, uh, as, uh, Victor Flint had said, I'm going to go ahead and tend the, uh, meeting tomorrow at Salt Lake for the Restoration Advisory Board. And also, uh, Brendan, thanks for bringing up the, uh, the issue regard to recesses. I'm going to investigate this further, but at this time I'm going to announce that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board will be in a deserving recess for July, which gives not only our board, but our officials a break that's, that's well needed. Uh, we were at full throttle this entire past, uh, twelve months. And we produced a record amount of resolutions, outgoing letters. And when you take a look at the results of all those, there's a long list of things that have been accomplished. And I, and I can't thank this board enough for your involvement across the board in all the areas, working with our legislators. So getting ready to crank up soon as we come back in August, we'll be getting ready for the next session coming up. We're going to need more ideas to work. So other than that, uh, if anybody have any other announcements?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Uh, since we're recessing next, next month, just to remind the board and the public that's, um, tuning in or watching the recording, that the primary ballots will be dropped, will be mailed out in a few weeks. So please, everybody, don't forget to vote. Make your voices heard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brendan. Okay, virtual, any, anything, uh, Charmaine?
Yep, actually, um, that reminded, uh, reminds me since, um, just a really quick announcement, I think. Um, correct me if I'm wrong. Board member Lee is actually on a ballot. Can you please tell me which ballot so we all know?
Uh, I'm not really comfortable doing that, Mr. Chair. I think that's an abuse of my seat. If someone else would like to say what?
I think it's OHA, um, and I'll, I'll find out and, and post it, but we wish you luck.
That's, that's correct, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you.
We wish, we wish you luck.
Here you go. Okay, uh, if no other, uh, input, you have something else? Yeah, come on up and we'll let you do it. We're way, way ahead of our normal three-hour schedule.
I know, two announcements in one night? That's wild. Um, well, since we're all talking about ballots and primaries and since nobody had a reaction to my name, I'm going to be the running Republican against Greg Takayama for House Representative thirty-four. Um, so I'll be on the ballot too, so good luck to you. Um, and that's about it. All right, Saraja.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, no other issues right now? We'll go ahead and consider this, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.